Moving.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Public input.
None of you.
Okay. Alright, we have our student representative here tonight. Uh, her name is Riley.
On Tuesday, November 6th, the National Omn Society hosted a blood drive where we collected 21 units of blood and that was a big surprise. The Athol High School Marching Event showed their flag at the Blood Stadium at Foxborough on Sunday, November 10th. They performed in the halftime show at the UMass versus BYU football game where one of 75 other marching, school marching bands took part alongside the UMass Marching Event during halftime. It was an awesome experience for them, including with the cold rain and all the bad weather. It was a great day to everyone. In the honor of this STEM Week, a group of science students were fortunate enough that in the field of TUMAS, they were enhanced with biotech contributors and leadership scientists. This has been an opportunity, one, um, one time for them to discuss opportunities in the biotech sector. This event was sponsored by NAMSS BioEd. The AARP Week held its annual birthday day assembly on Friday, November 9th. It was first issued to AHS students on November 9th. And CAPS ELA was given this week. Students were completing math recitals. Our annual workshop convention case was on June, November 20th, beginning at 7:00 in Otterstone. For sports, the girls soccer team played Monument Mountain in the tournament and they fought hard, but they lost with a score of 41. The memorial pavilion is now completed at the entrance of the athletic field. There will be a small dedication ceremony before the game on Thanksgiving. At 9:45. The football team will be facing off against Mahler at 10:00. There will also be a pep rally for this missile on Wednesday to kick off before the game. This year's 2018 induction with the Athol High School Athletic Hall theme includes nine individuals and two sports teams. Inductees will be introduced to athletics every day. The event will take place at the Athol Town Hall on Saturday, November 1st. Tickets for the event can be purchased for $30. Check should be made up to the Athol Royal Student Athletic Association. English sports signups have begun. English sports begin November 26th in the May after Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Okay, um, moving on to recognitions. Let's start with school committees right now. Keep them here. Thank you.
Hi, certainly would like to welcome our new member, Bill Chason. Um, it's always nice to be able to sit at the table with a former teacher. I don't want to age him, but you know, as a freshman, I did have him as a math teacher. But, um, congratulations. Hope you enjoy yourself.
Okay, moving on to student of the month. We'll start with, um, the Aces student of the month. We have two students of the month. Pumpkin student, don't you worry. And I'm going to ask their teachers have both come to recognize them. So we picked one student of the month from each house. So we have Emma Achen from first grade and her teacher is Mrs. Hanlon. And from the other side, the two to four side of the house, we have Tyler Kuzmarszak from Mrs. Calvi Majewski's second grade classroom. We're going to let each of their teachers, so we asked teachers to write, um, you know, give a nomination, write a little narrative about why that student should be selected. So I'm going to let each of these teachers explain why they chose their students and let them present. So, and Ms. Calvi could go first.
Well, thank you all for coming to learn. Tyler, uh, first I'd like to say, um, successful students come from strong role models and supportive families. So a big thank you to Doug and Kelly and family. Tyler Kuzmarszak is a very deserving of this award because he is a student that has shown tremendous growth in his academics and in his social emotional growth. He promotes our class motto, which is what happens to one affects us all. And we are a sweet family and he reminds that to his peers every day. When someone succeeds in class, Tyler is the first one to stand up and cheer them on. He rises to every academic challenge and pushes himself to strive for better outcomes. I am very proud of Tyler. Congratulations.
So Emma is our student of the month this, um, month for first grade. And Emma is not only a good example and a kind friend, but she sincerely cares for her classmates. Um, Emma has started a new trend in our class. When anyone does something good or has been working hard, she gives them two thumbs up and looks at them and all the students have now continue to do this as well. Emma is just such a good role model for her friends and just such a pleasure to have in class and we're so thankful for that.
Okay, then move on to Rosa Piquet School.
Unfortunately, for those of you who may not know, Beth Craven's dad passed away last week. Um, so they may not have been able to contact a student from one of them to be here, but what we will do next month is make sure that we recognize, uh, both students from last month and this month for that. Um, and, um, I want to give my condolences, condolences to Beth Craven's family at this time, you know, it was unexpected and a difficult journey for her.
Alright, moving on to our student of the month.
Please introduce Cameron Truch to eighth grade. Congratulations to the artist student of the month. Only. Of course, that is Songar, the eighth grade teacher who nominated Cameron. Cam actively participates in class, completes his classwork in a thorough and timely manner. He's not afraid to ask for help when he hates it. He's able to balance maintaining good grades with his extracurricular commitments. Soccer in band, Cameron also demonstrates integrity, is not swayed by someone of any negative behavior in his peer group. Additionally, has a great sense of humor and a positive attitude, which shows positivity and safety.
Okay, and Athol High School.
Our student of the month is Zachary Fish. Make sure I was doing it right. Zachary was nominated by our, our custodial staff, specifically Joe Needle. Zachary is an intern, serves an internship at the school. So I'd like to read you what Mr. Needle said about Zach. Zach has been my intern since school started. In that time, I've noticed that he takes a lot of pride in his surroundings. Even when he is not working with me, I've witnessed him going out of his way to make the school better. On his way into school in the mornings, I see him stop and pick up trash in the parking lot and throw it away. He has told people in the cap to clean up after themselves. It's nice to see him doing things around here that makes Athol a better place. I thank him for that. And when I went downstairs to tell Zachary that he was getting this award for that, the students in the class said, yep, that's Zach. He's always supposed to pick up after a classmate. So congratulations.
Alright, before we go any further, I just want to, um, mention that this is being, uh, built for use, I think it goes mentioned to AOTV, is that where it goes?
Eighty dollars.
And our website, so just, legally I'm supposed to say that. Okay, uh, and we have a staff member of the month.
I nominated, um, my assistant, Angela Kitts Miller. Come on up here. So as a new principal, I'm going to read this. As a new principal, a competent assistant is critical. And I've been fortunate enough to have Angela guiding me. Uh, she's keeping me organized and that is not an ordinary feat. You can ask her. It's not, I'm always looking for something and it's usually on my head or something. Angela goes above and beyond of her duties every day, covering classes and emergency. Uh, she's even stepped up to become a senior class advisor when staff ever left. Um, Angela works well beyond the workday. For example, um, if I email her about putting something up on the electronic site, she stops to do it, she does that on a Saturday or Monday or even in the evening. So she does a really good job of that. Um, so she's been done before I came back. She's a true team player. And although she's helped me tremendously, I can say without a doubt, she, her students adore her. So I got a couple of students who will follow that. So they said she's very sweet. She's my second mother. She always helps us. I love her. She's funny and she's always smiling. I am grateful for all that Angela does, so I've nominated her as staff of the month.
Okay, Subway Scholar Athlete of the Month Award.
Once again, we have two recipients. Our first recipient could not be here, but I'd like to recognize her. Riley Palana from the Vealaki team is also a basketball and softball player. She was the high school's Scholar Athlete of the Month. And for the middle school, we have another three sport athlete who has, on her picture, she maintains a 98.3 GPA. She's a seventh grader. Um, she plays soccer, basketball and softball. Um, and that is Jenna Bonifant.
I wanted to take a minute tonight to recognize Molly Sappucci. Molly has been nominated and will be given an award by, and I know I'm not going to get this right, Molly.
Mount Greatland Conservancy. It was actually, she was a weekend prior.
Yes, and ultimately she's been given that award because what we have been trying to do in the school district is to ensure that our students are involved in service outside of, of the school. And, uh, Molly has made arrangements with them to do some conservation work in and around Aces School. And because of those efforts and willingness to connect the community with the school, they have recognized her and I want to say thank you. Last year, we had several community groups who began, um, doing the work. Um, and what I found out and discovered was Molly was quietly doing this without me even knowing it. Um, and so I really want to thank her for those efforts and her energy because if you look back at our vision and mission for our district, it's very much about our students being involved in service within our community. And she's been a real leader in that. So I just wanted to recognize her tonight for that.
Moving on to unfinished business, dropout prevention and recovery officer.
Yes, I'm excited to let you know, um, that we had, uh, received grant funds to allow us to put this position in place. And we are very lucky in that, um, in our search, we came across a candidate who has been embedded in our, in our town for a long time, working under the patch team downtown who applied for the position. Um, when I called her boss and said, what do you, I want to get a reference from you, what do you think? And she said, basically, Darcy, if you take her, I think I'm going to kill her. That's a very good sign. Um, and, and she has been now at the district for just over a week and I'll tell you, she is definitely going to be worth the bag for our buck. So I want to introduce you tonight to Shirley Mitchell, who will tell you a little bit about what her role is going to be.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. It's not easy, is it? So, um, I'm very excited to be here, um, working with the community that recognized me who've contributed to like the Bat Pet Drive and other events that I've held. Um, but here as the dean of, uh, dropout prevention and recovery, I took the first week and I actually called students from the list who had either dropped out or withdrew. I talked to community, uh, people, I talked to, uh, did a survey with the teachers. We got a lot of good information back. Talked to a couple of kids who are looking, um, to re-enter back into the school. So right now, I've got three major tasks that I'm, I'm gearing up. MJ and I are going to create like a re-entry program, a re-entry meeting on kids who are interested in coming back to the school and what that will look like for them so they can be successful. Um, the second task is really developing criteria to figure out who is like high risk to be able to drop out with the kids who are currently on the roll. Um, and so we're developing criteria for that as well through ninth through 12th grade at this moment. And then my third challenge is to try to begin to create something that's kind of like a hub. So the, um, school, state agencies, uh, local agencies and big states coming together to support whether it's a student who's at risk or a family has a current crisis that might pull that child away from the school and see who then the community and the different state agencies might be able to cut in and help and support that family. So those are three major things that I'll be working on currently.
And what I will say to you is the reason why we hired Shirley is because of her ability to bring right around services to families. And what we know right now is we have a host of people who can really support a child once they're in the building. But the problem is, a lot of our kids, and Shirley found this out very quickly, there were outside problems that caused them to not be successful in school. So her skillset is really helping to rally people around students to deal with that. So we're, um, extremely excited to have her. And, um, I know just based on the conversation we had the other day, I gave her a list of I don't know how many things to do and she had accomplished them. What I know is it's going to take three or four weeks within one. Um, so, uh, we're excited to have her on board and our goal is that her position will expand not only from the high school, but also to the other schools next year, um, in the capacity of working on the attendance issue that we brought forth before. So, um, thank you very much for coming tonight and look forward to working with you further.
School committee meetings at individual schools.
Yes, so essentially, usually at the first meeting in September or in the summer, actually, we decide to visit each school and do a school committee meeting there. Unfortunately, that did not happen this year. So I wanted to, uh, bring that forth to the school committee, ask one if people are interested in doing that. And if so, what I can do is draft up, uh, dates for us to visit the high school, um, RCS and, um, in Aces, I have, the meetings we currently have scheduled changed to those locations, um, hopefully in the spring when the weather's better, not during this dumb time. Um, particularly, I should say, for Royal St., not for the other schools, but for Royal St. to make sure we're not, I, I know some of you have to come from there, but for the families.
Mom.
But I'd like to put forward, if it's okay with the committee, a proposal next month that we go on the road, um, for a few months to make sure we hit all the schools to our families to attend those meetings, if that's okay with the committee.
Any comment?
Yeah, I think it's important. I mean, not that we get any more parent community representation at our meetings, no matter what school we're at, but, but it's important that we be present in the schools and have things running.
Well, I will tell you, Royal St. last year, we had a packed house. So, yeah.
Well, I still support the school.
Is that something we need to take a vote on or is there any opposition?
I think there's been, hasn't there?
Yeah, we have done, yes. So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Then we'll move on to police dogs in sports.
Okay, so I know at the last meeting, I asked, um, Mary Jane to put forth a letter requesting that we possibly have police dogs go through the building. So I wanted to take a minute today, uh, to have our school resources officer talk a little bit about past practice in that area, um, what happened maybe in other schools and so forth and so on. And I'm going to explain to you why I think it's important. Um, last month, I received an email from a community member very concerned because on Facebook, a student had posted that they had a cup of marijuana open front of the high school. Um, based on that, uh, Mary Jane interviewed the child, had a conversation. We found out that wasn't the case, but I started thinking about what is our standard practice when it comes to, um, you know, drug use potentially in the high school and how do we deal with it? In my last school districts, we would run random times, dogs through the building at the same time that we did emergency protocols. So, um, so if we were doing a safety protocol where it was a bomb scare or whatever, we'd have the dogs come through the building at the same time, um, in order to make sure more it was preventative than it was trying to find something. But when kids knew that was happening, they had a tendency not to, uh, bring those types of things to school. So that's why I brought it forth and I wasn't able to talk about that last month, so I wanted to make sure I'm in. And I also wanted to get, uh, Mary Jane and the school resources officers opinion about that. And I believe somebody had asked that question at the last meeting, um, so I wanted them to present and then ask the school committee what their thoughts are.
Officer Cummings and I, and, and Mr. King talked about, you know, bringing the dogs in to do more than marijuana, which is as you know, that opioids and vaping and sometimes things called Jules are becoming issues in all schools. Um, so we just wanted to co-act. So we talked to Officer Cummings about perhaps getting a team of dogs to get them come in and do a search in school. You know, have him do a little bit of talk of what happens traditionally in other districts and how we're, how we can do the same.
Yeah, well, first of all, thanks for having me. Um, my name's Tom Cummings. For those of you that don't know me, um, I grew up here in Athol, Athol native, um, went to Athol schools. But, um, yeah, Helen Miss Fernandes pointed out, um, we're not reinventing the wheel. This is something we've done in the past with Athol schools. Um, we keep it the same as we've done in the past, uh, quick run through the school, lockers in the hallways, um, and then maybe a couple of random classrooms. And I think it's important because it kind of promotes to the public that the school in collaboration with the police department is taking it seriously, that we're trying to deter this, um, the opioid epidemic that our, our community as well as state that we're going through, um, is serious. And I think it's important that we get in there, let kids know that we're here, you know, in case they do have a plot of doing something in the school relating to, to drugs, um, that we're here and, and that we're, we're keeping an eye on it. Um, and I also did check with another district, um, before coming here tonight, and I did confirm with that other district that it's something that they do as well. Um, it's actually, his answer was absolutely, you know, we do this, um, just random, bring dogs through. And it could be in collaboration, like what Ms. Fernandes said, during a, um, whether it be lockdown drills or whether it be, uh, a fire drill or something where we already have, you know, the kids, you know, going through the, uh, the building and exiting, we could do a quick sweep through then or we could do it another way. Um, but that's something I can speak with the administration of, of the school. But, um, yeah.
So at any rate, I wanted to make the school committee aware, make sure people were okay with it, if there's any concerns. Now's the time to bring it up. Um, otherwise, uh, I think we'll move forward, but I didn't want to do that without going through the school committee.
Tom, do you know the last time that we had one in the district?
I, I can look it up. If you need me to research, I don't know the last time we had one.
We did it about two weeks ago. We did it before the, uh, oh, two, I was going to say two years ago. I say two weeks ago. Two years ago, that was the last time we did it.
And that was just to bring the dogs in and if you wanted to check in the classrooms, have the kids come out?
I, I think so. I, I wasn't there. If it was two years ago, I wasn't a part of it.
Did it?
Dave, do you know?
Yeah, that's exactly, I mean, the students are taken out of the classrooms, they're in the hallway, and then the, the dogs proceed into the classroom, do a little loop and then they leave.
The dogs are not with the students.
Right. What I can speak to is the reason why we did the drills, once the students were out and were exposed to the dogs, because that was the concern.
It's just how I used to do it when I was at the high school.
Yeah. It's minimally invasive to the kids. Right.
Nancy? Why did it stop? Mr. King?
No, I don't, I, I think.
Why did they start doing it?
No, I think it's, it's happened right along.
Didn't you just say two years?
Two years ago. I, I'm not aware of us doing it last year in the school.
Right.
But it's happened, it's happened right along. Uh, last year didn't happen, but.
I didn't know if there was a reason why.
No.
I just think it didn't happen.
There was no specific reason why it didn't happen.
Okay, alright. Chuck?
Just kind of a quick question for you. I would assume there are certain drugs that are, I mentioned it's hard for dogs to sniff out opioids if they're in a container. So is it something that you do other than use dogs in, in a case like that or am I incorrect in that?
No, it would, it wouldn't be just the dogs. Um, they're, they're trained, I don't know, I can't rattle off exactly which drugs they're certified to smell. Um, that would be a question I'd have to catch up to my K9 officer about and ask him. Um, but it is a, there's a whole list. I want to say he said, don't quote me on this, but I think it was up around 13 different kinds of drugs, um, that the dog is certified to smell. So, it, and yes, and if it's in a closed container, um, I would imagine, again, I'm not a K9 officer, but I would imagine he'd still be able to, uh, to pick up on the scent.
Cameron?
When I was at the Arabian, we did locker checks. Do you do locker checks? From what I understand and speaking with the administration, yeah, that's, that's something we would do. We'd go up and down the, the hallways, smell in the lockers as well, yes.
It, it's just going to be done within once a year?
We could do, well, if we suspect it, we could do it once or twice a year, maybe even three times. It just depends on.
Sounds like it was a one, once a year thing.
We have to coordinate with the police department because we only have one K9 time we've been at Athol. So we have to coordinate with the police departments to bring in additional dogs.
I think the, the purpose of it, in my mind, is to do it multiple times during the year so the kids know it could happen at any time. So if you take that risk, though you take the risk, this could be the day they're coming in and it be random, because if you do it, say we're going to do it on Tuesday this month, it'll never work. And so that randomness is important. So we can't do you exactly when, because then we defeat the purpose of doing it. But I would assume it would be done multiple times during the school. That's what I'm asking for.
Well, that's, that's what I was kind of getting at, was for, we got more of these.
And that won't be a one and done for sure.
Right now, we're talking about the high school. We can bring that forward, um, and talk to Mr. Telleck and see if you think that's important to happen there. Um, we're not against it. Um, I'm personally, it worked in several schools, middle schools where we've done it and it's never been a problem as long as the dogs don't come in contact with the children. So that's always the goal. So if it's a lockdown drill, we only do the lockers on the outside and empty classrooms. We don't go with the classrooms where the kids are. That's always been the standard protocol where I work.
Chuck? This building has been done before. The year that I was principal, which would be what, five, six years ago now, we had a, we had the dogs in. And it occurred at least a few times prior to me being in this building. So it's not something that the middle school hasn't had done before. I don't know when the last time was, but like I said, the year that I was in the building, we had the dogs. I assume you're not going to try and just use Athol's K9, you're bringing a team of them, like they usually do?
Well, I know, different dogs are certified in different things. And so it would all depend on.
But they also get one out too, don't they? They don't get tired.
For long periods of time. Yeah, if it's a long search, they get a little winded. But a short little, um, trip through, through the, the school shouldn't be too much for one dog. But if we need multiple, you know, we have plenty of, uh, resources around us that we can reach out to.
I think we've got an, yeah. Rodney, Paul, so to.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to new business, special education update.
Okay, I have PowerPoint behind me.
You have a clicker?
I do, I will say.
Okay. So Catherine is going to, uh, present for special education because, um, as you know, last year, we've talked a little bit about an addition of a person there, um, in the department. So we want to give you an update on what's been happening, um, with that work and, uh, what our sta, status is currently, um, in relationship to some of those goals. So I'm going to turn it over to Catherine and, um, can everybody see?
So the first thing is just to talk a little bit about the operational charge. We did add a staff member in, so, um, the special education coordinator. So, uh, Darcy added more things on my plate. So we, I am now, well, I have been the director of people services.
So we, I am now, well, I have been the director of people services, special education 504, guidance and nursing, the K-10 homeschool, and social emotional learning, the special ed coordinator. And I'm, so I'm going to talk fast, so slow me down if you need me to. I is working primarily on inclusion support, supporting teachers and staff meetings, developing IEPs, and compliance with state and federal regulations. As last year, the school principals are responsible for staffing decisions, the evaluation, fidelity to the IEPs and 504s, they can allocate the resources of the district, meaning, you know, whatever is decided that an IEP meeting is needed, they sign the IEPs and they assign staff duties. And the assistant principals do 504 meetings and assign by the principal initial reeval and high-profile IEP meetings, and they allocate the resources of the district. So these were happening last year, and we just switched up a little bit with the new special education coordinator. Special education, last year, number of students we had on IEPs were, was 27.1%. This was, this is the state data. This year, in October, we are down to 25.8%. I think it's probably lower than that in terms of percentage, but that was what was on the state website, so I went with that because that was that moment in time. Last year, we had a lot of conversations about how many kids we were, who were being taught by certified teachers in their content area. So that full inclusion model, we were not using that much. We had 32% of our students doing full inclusion last year. Now we have 85% of our students are being taught by teachers certified in their content area with support from specialized teachers and parents. Partial inclusion, which is more than 20% out of the general education setting, was last year, we were using that a lot, that model was 51%. We had a lot of small group classes taught by special ed teachers. Now we're down to 7%. So we've moved away from the model of having special ed teachers and not content area teachers teaching the kids. And then as students in substantially separate, we have those numbers as well. We had 17% in substantially separate classes, and now we're down to 8% in substantially separate classes. So the majority of our students on IEPs are being taught by teachers certified in their area of content.
Just want to compliment you on those numbers, we could not have been used.
That we have a wonderful team, that's all I'm going to say. Great people working for what's best for the kids, and the data is very clear that this is what's best for the kids. So it wasn't, it wasn't as hard to put it in, Chuck. Thank you though. Looking at our in-district special education, I just wanted to compare for you, the state gives us a 10, 10 schools that we are compared to in our MCAS results. And so if we look, we do have a high number of students, or the highest number of students on educational plans at this time. This was 2018, so this is this year. The state average is 16.6%. So we are almost 10 percentage points over the state average for special education.
And I think what's important, when we look at our comparable districts, we're also looking at comparable numbers as far as income. And one of the things that we're really spending a lot of time, and the state's been talking to us about is that fact, fact that a over number of kids who are considered low income are being identified with special ed needs. And so we've really got to pay attention to that, because at the end of the day, if we're coming from a home where there's low income, we may be identifying issues that are really about resource issues rather than about intellect. And we've got to be really careful to distinguish that. And so we really want to be noting that we really should not be this high in the number of our kids who are on IEPs, something we have to pay close attention to.
Also comparing our DART districts, that's the comparison from the state, is our out-of-district percentile. And this is another one I was kind of proud of, because our 1.3% is our out-of-district number, the state is 1.1. So we are not out of whack when it comes to the number of kids we have in out-of-district placements. And you can see there are some districts that are out of whack. So we are not. Also, I compared the total percentage, 2015 was the last date I had for this information, but again, this is the same, same number of communities and the state, and what we're spending a percentage on, the percentage of our budget on special education. And in 2015, we were at 23.4%. The district has been pretty steady, right around there, but we're still spending more than the state on special education. So just something to keep in mind, not as much as some districts, but we are, we are overspending as compared to the state.
And the reason why I'm bringing this up is not because we want to, we want to give less services to kids. The question is, do, can we do it more cost-effectively within district rather than sending kids out? So I want to make sure that's clear, because I did not put this number up, or I didn't have to put this number up, because what we're looking to do is to not give more support to kids. What we're looking to do is say, are we doing it the most cost-effective way? So I want to make sure we say that.
Absolutely.
We've got a couple of questions.
Well, I, I wouldn't consider it a problem that we have a relatively high number of kids with special ed needs, you know, especially with, in comparison to communities nearby and much like us. I mean, you know, we are, we are a low-income community, we have always had a lot of foster kids in the community.
So let me, let me explain, Carla, why I think it's a problem. What research is telling us is when a kid is identified on an IEP, they are less likely to graduate and less likely to make a reasonable income. And so if we're misidentifying them, we're also pigeonholing them. Because there is a difference between a temporary problem and a long-term problem. And so if we're diagnosing kids who have a temporary problem due to a condition in their home that can be resolved and accelerate them, and you're putting a label on them for the rest of their lives, then what we're doing is leaving them in that cycle of poverty. And that, when you think about equity, is the problem. And so we want to make sure that, and there are a lot of ways in which to service kids with struggles. We outtitle one for a reason, we provide very similar support, but doesn't label the child with a disability for life. And so that's what we want to be careful of, and what we are seeing over and over again is that trauma tends to identi, a lot of the issues that come with trauma can look like a permanent disability, when in fact, they're not. And so we just want to get clearer about that and make sure we're putting the kids on the right pathway and not pigeonholing them, so that in the long term, it has better effects on their life.
You're, you're saying there's really no pressure to limit services to kids who might truly need?
Exactly. I can give services to kids without them having one IEP.
Right. And when you put someone on an educational plan, to get on the educational plan, you have to be identified with a disability. And so this is the piece where the social justice piece comes in, because you're, when you tell someone they're disabled, that has a trajectory for the rest of their lives, it changes the way their parents think about them, how they think about their lives. And so we just have to be very, very careful. A child in need is not necessarily a child with disability, but our children in need do need services and care. And so we built new and different systems and tweaked some other systems to make sure that kids are getting that, that care they need.
I found it interesting that Greenfield and Winchington, which I think are very similar communities, as far as poverty level, had 10% less kids being serviced on IEPs, yet their percentage of the budget was about the same as 25% as in Athol.
Well, Greenfield, I know, has some in-district programs, so they might be spending more money on, on in-district programs. I'm not sure about Winchington, but, but yeah, it is interesting what they're spending. And it could be, it could be a number of factors.
But it was interesting that they have nearly 10% less kids on IEPs, and it's very similar communities.
Right. And we haven't got into comparison, but it'd be interesting to see, they're spending less, what are their outcomes? If their outcomes are higher than ours, that's another question to be asked, because it may be that they're putting their money somewhere else that's having a better impact on the kids than putting it into special ed services. And that's what I'm trying to say.
And we can see that, if we go to the state website, we just go to the profiles, and you look, it, it will give you that information, right, in public, which is see how their cast, how the kids did on the MCAS. So how are our kids doing? This is just a reminder from Darcy's presentation last month, that the kids in the LA in third grade are doing great. ELA in fourth grade had a dip. We had some great, tremendous gains in fifth grade, gains in sixth grade, a little dip in seventh grade, eighth grade did great, and then we had a large dip with ELA in, at the high school level. So this helps us to focus our resources. In math, again, kids generally did great, sixth grade math had a dip. I think sixth grade math had a dip across these higher districts. I don't think it was just the special.
And the state.
And the state, thank you. So when we, and then science, again, we know these are the same numbers actually, that were, these are very similar to the district, but this is just pulling out the special ed students. So, you know, what are the goals? What's under construction? First of all, we're working toward that continuous improvement of student outcomes on the MCAS, on the benchmark, the district-based assessments. We want to close that gap, particularly fourth grade, ELA, and 10th grade ELA. Those are the two most problematic when you take away the dips that happen from the rest of the district and the rest of the state. The second goal is to develop a cost-benefit analysis of in-district versus out-of-district programs. Again, are we using our resources in the right, in the right place and in the most productive, productive places? So those are what we're working on, and given those, given those goals, this is how we're doing it. Just a couple of the things that are going on right now. First of all, the special education coordinator, I want to talk about this a little bit in another slide, but she's focusing on high school inclusion practices, preschool, and IEP development. These are really the three areas, the data has shown that we need support from her. The assistant principals are doing bimonthly walkthroughs with a protocol tool, which is an expansion of the protocol tool that we use as a whole district. And we are gathering data. This is not evaluative data, and I think that's really important. This is just data to tell us where do we need to support, who do we need support, where do we need to support, what professional development do we need, where are our areas of weakness, and how can we, how can we fix those? So we are not using this as teacher evaluation data. We have already provided professional development just this year, and inclusion and co-teaching across the district. And we will continue to provide professional development, starting this month, we'll have one of our meetings, would be on social emotional learning, our after-school meetings that the guidance department and I will be planning. And then we started the CPAC backup. There was, the CPAC fell off the rails last year. So we had a great meeting, it was 25 people at our first meeting, and so we'll continue to, to build that support out with parents. So the special ed coordinator, very specifically, I know this is a word slide, but because we have a special ed coordinator, the people services director, me, is now working on social emotional learning, which our data has shown us is a very important area of need in the district. So I have created a social emotional learning team, and we've already begun to meet, and we are going to develop a three-year plan for the district on, around social emotional learning. And that team includes community members, parents, teachers, anybody who wanted to help out. So that's very exciting, a lot of work, and I'm able to do that because Chrissy is focusing on high school inclusion, co-teaching, best practices, particularly in ELA and instruction. Those are the areas that we're showing the MCAS have greatest concern. She also supports me in promoting best practices and compliance with special education regulations and state and federal regulations. She is focusing on eligibility determinations, that piece that we were talking about, whether or not a child is disabled. So she's really honing in on certain areas where we see eligibility determinations as perhaps areas where we need a little more capacity in those meetings, and she's doing that. And she's supporting families and schools in developing quality programming for kids and making sure that the kids that are in special ed are getting really high-quality Just looking at this slide is sort of what's happening at every school. So if you look at ACES, that's without the preschool, I took the preschool out, and they screw the numbers. So that's K-4. 29% of the kids at ACES are, are considered disabled, a third, almost a third. At RCS, it's 14%, closer to the state average. At arms, it's 22%, and at AHS, it's 23%. The student-teacher ratio at the schools, at ACES, you have one special ed teacher for every 25 students, K-4. At RCS, you have one to 19 students, arms is one to 14, and AHS is one to 17. And what you can see is that the higher student-to-teacher ratio are the critical need areas. So at ACES, clearly, we have a higher ratio of student to teacher, one teacher, and that's one of our critical areas we need. The high school is relatively higher, not outrageous, but still, you look at the middle school, and we're having success, and we have a smaller special ed to student ratio.
And I will let you know that the ratio at ACES is even after moving that halftime position from Royalston over to ACES, and moving the teacher who was running the-
Futures.
Futures program over to ACES. So we're still not there. And so I bring that up because we're going to be having budget discussions soon. And this is our level four school, and when our ratios are the highest at a level four school, it's something we really have to talk about. And so I wanted to make sure we got this out early, so that when we're doing the budget discussions, people see some of what's happening.
I go to the chair.
Let me just take a quick-
Hey, I-
Matt, Tom.
Yes?
Would you happen to know the math, how, or what would change that ratio? Is it one, two, three, four?
There are six and a half teachers at ACES and 133 kids. So who's got a math brain? If we added one more teacher, that'd be like down to 20, almost 21 to 20.
Go one and a half to two and a half.
Yeah.
Might it be in an elementary school that the higher percentage is due because of speech and language?
You definitely expect to see that, Ken. Thank you for pointing that out. Yes, you definitely expect to see greater numbers, and actually, the numbers are high in our secondary, higher than I would expect, right? Because eventually, at the high school level, they should be coming off their educational plan. You do expect to see a curve of higher to lower, which we have a bit of, but we are still way above the state average. Any other questions? And I think that might have been my, nope, not my last slide. Just this last piece, we did have this year a situation where we had three teachers at the middle school and a teacher at the elementary leave at the very, very beginning of the school year, end of the summer, right? Literally.
They told us within the, the last week before school's done.
Right. So I wanted to explain how we went through the process, so when you get questions, if you get questions, you understand how the process goes. We use a very structured interview process, and it's conducted by the principals. And the, the principals go through a process where they focus, and some of you've been on committees with me, interviewed committees with me, with the principals, and you know, we focus on the needs of the schools and the priority of the members in the interview. So you go through the process, what are our priorities, it gets advertised on school spring. The first priority that we call applicants is certification. We really would like to have certified teachers primarily, right? So those are the first, that's our first round. In this situation, we went through that round and offered, and people didn't take jobs, right, at the last hour, really went through a couple of iterations. So as a result, we now have, all of our positions are currently filled, two teachers are certified, and, but they needed to get notice that they're other jobs, so it took a month to get them in the door. And then one teacher who is, who was working in the district and had done a tremendous job as, at her job, and is now on a waiver, but she's taking her until this month, right, Tom?
I guess so.
So, and again, all positions are currently filled, so we're pretty excited about when those ones are started.
And what I will say is what I've been trying to do is we don't just hire to hire anymore. If they're not qualified, I'd rather stay with a sub and get a qualified person, because I think that's the mistake we've been making. We rush to get somebody in. They're not any good, and the 90 days won't even go, and we're getting another person. They're not any good and the 90 days won't even go and we're getting another person in. And I want to give great credit to this because Tom, Shannon, and Catherine this year have really worked hard to make sure we're getting people who really can do the job. And you've got resumes where literally every year the person has changed the job. It tells us something. And so with special ed in particular, even if we find a qualified candidate or in a bidding war usually with the other schools, which I also want to bring up because that had budget implications this year. Because the past history was when we, person leaves, we're going to decrease the salary down to BA1. Well, you find a special ed teacher at BA1 or a math or a science teacher at BA1, good luck. And I think that was the other thing we had to, we look at what seems reasonable to put down for a salary where we can be competitive to get competent people. And so during budget season, I've asked Lynn this year not to do that, to keep the salary where it is and whoever left, so that we can see if we're going to be able to sustain that. Because I'm really worried if we hire at BA1 and put our budget at that, we could continue the problem we're having because you can't get quality people in these particular areas around those salaries. We just have too many other people who are willing to pay a lot more. So I want to bring that up again, just as we, that's a message for budget.
All right, I would say it was more Shannon and Tom than me. I didn't think it was more of them. Ken?
We know that we have no, limited staff at ARMS. Now those students that weren't serviced. And in true years, that's the only thing I've had phone calls on has been those students that hadn't been receiving services. What's going to happen?
Well, they, they did receive, they had subs, just as if a regular teacher was out. Tom, did you want to, you did a little research on that.
Oh, we did our best with the sub coverage, yes. Fortunately now we have everyone in place, but I think the needs were met. I mean, not with certified people necessarily, but.
But certainly if there was a situation where we were not able to provide a service, if that does come up, then we would provide compensatory services in some way.
This is terrific, a terrific presentation, honest presentation. But the thing that I'm really kind of thrilled to see, that, you know, see the ratio. I swear people have no idea what the ratio of staffs. And to see that in black and white, it's really refreshing and very refreshing. And knowing, you know, how to target, what to target. And then, you know, first, you know, Ken had mentioned, we get, you've got other people who are taking speeches, this and that, but they actually helped the staffing ratio. You know, so that gives you an idea of the, you know, 1 to 25 is still way up there. You might have OTPT, full-time, part-time people, all these people. And that helps the staffing ratio, but they may not have anyone to do it, you know, a lot of the kids do.
Thank you. SEL grant.
Before Catherine leaves, I'll let her announce it because she will.
Okay, well, we were lucky to find because of the work of Julie Stanley and Rachel Schwab at the elementary school, a safe and supportive schools grant. And so I fly for it. And the grant has two levels. One is your, at level one, and you're writing your three-year plan. And two is you've got your three-year plan and you're implementing it. I had to write a grant about the culture and social emotional needs at both ACES and ARMS, which were our areas of greatest concern in terms of those, some of the information from the data that we had. And we were awarded the grant. We were not awarded everything we wanted, but we were awarded the grant. So that'll help me pay the teachers on the SEL team because they're spending some time after school with me throughout this year and will write in, in May or June, we'll be presenting our three-year plan.
Thank you.
Okay. The data portal.
Okay, I'm going to give Ed a second to set it up. Just so you know, it's okay with the chair, we'd like to combine the RCS technology and data together because they really, once we do the presentation, realize they really do align. So it's okay with the committee, we'd like to combine those two together. So see you now. Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay, great. So please, Ed needs it up. And I apologize if I'm going to do a PowerPoint, but because of my foot, I'm not going to stand today. I hope that's okay with everyone. If it's an issue, let me know. So last year, I know during my evaluation, one of the questions that the school committee had was what data do we have to prove out whether kids are in fact learning in the district outside of state testing data? And so what we have done this year is we've developed a, a portal.
Turned it off, sorry. Only gets five hours of battery.
I don't know why. Not tech savvy, apparently, I'm going to see it. Okay, so what we've done is we've created a data portal. And I want to say to you that I went to Molly and I went to Ed and said, figure this out. So I gave him a template of what it was supposed to look like and literally they built it. So I cannot take the credit for it. It has been a huge undertaking and in a very short period of time of how many months?
One. Couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks. They put this together and have it running, which in my last district would have taken about six months to do. So I give them great credit. So basically what this portal does now is it houses the state testing, the district benchmark testing, school common assessment data, all in one place. We use it to discuss student learning needs, set plans for acceleration. And when I use the word acceleration, I truly believe what we're doing is seeing where the kid is and moving them forward. So whether they're below grade level, at grade level, or above grade level, it's always about how we move them ahead. I don't believe in remediation. It's always acceleration. And I think that's a more positive word for kids than, by the way, you got to go to remediation. And then we retest students every six weeks to document and improve it based on a plan we put together to accelerate them. This is what the portal looks like currently. So you'll see in the first column, what we have done is where did they fall on our benchmark tests? So the kids actually take the benchmark test within the first three weeks of coming to school. And it gives them a marker at exceeding grade level, meeting grade level, partially meeting grade level, or below grade level. And this is what we talked about with the NWA data. So right away as a classroom teacher, I can say, okay, this is where my kids are at. This particular model is based on second grade. So you don't see here MCAS scores and that's because it's second grade, we don't take MCAS. So the state data is not in the portal for them because we don't have any data from them yet. So, but if this was third grade, the next set you would see of data would be MCAS data. And that would be dumped in. The third set is what the students do during their common assessments. And their common assessments are given every six weeks. And so what you will see happening here is it's actually particular standards the kids take. And how did they do on that individual standard? So if I am a teacher and I'm looking at the first student, let's say the first one that said B on the NWA, I now see what was the issues that the kid is having and what do I need to do to improve for them? So if I look at one B, one C, one D, and those questions in the test, which were about addition and subtraction, this student performed below grade level. So I know I need to remediate them in that area. However, when it comes to subtraction within 100, this student has met every benefit. I don't need to worry about it. But, so now I have a wind block, 20 minutes a day, where now I can sit down with this kid in small groups and other kids who've struggled and work with them on that. So it's very clear to me now, there's no gray area about what is the problem. So the portal really allows that to happen and this is instantaneous. So once the teacher takes the, takes the, the kids take the exam, NWA, that afternoon, they can look at the kids' data. Once the kids take their common assessment, that afternoon, they can begin putting this in the portal. And it gives you a history over time so you can say, you know, at the end of the year, how has this kid improved? Are we seeing them having less Bs and more Ms? Okay? So here again is a, is a more close-up view. Here's the wonders unit that we just gave on 1019. And this particular class, you can see, looking at the teacher, teachers overall, we've got some kids who are at meets and NWA, but we're seeing them slipping in some areas. So this is a kid I may want to keep after school, put into a small group. It gives me more ability to target who I need to work with. And that's coming from the data and also allows you to have a better conversation with the parent. It's something you can do with your child at home. So last year, when you asked me that question, I couldn't give you the answer because we hadn't built this yet. We did not have a, a selected benchmark test. We hadn't created common assessments and we didn't have even the system to put in the state data. That has not now happened over the last month. So I wanted to let you know that we are very much data-driven now. So if you have questions on my section, I'm going to start because the next section, just before the questions are asked, is really about what impact this has had on the technology department and putting this all together. You've got a couple of people with questions, I think, before I go on.
I was, I was just wondering if Darcy or somebody could interpret that last chart for me. Because I, the columns are individual students, what are the columns?
The columns here is the actual state standard. So this is OLL 7.1 and it's actually saying how, what, how did these students do in this, this particular category? So I can't tell you.
The rows are individual.
This is how the kid actually, so this is a student, this DVD across the, this is how that individual student performed. But anything going this way is an individual student. This is the actual stuff that they were tested on and how they did individually.
Okay, so that fourth column we've got serious problems with.
This fourth column here is where do we believe they are overall?
That's the fifth column.
The fifth?
Yeah.
This, this one, yes. And so this, I'm glad you asked that question because what is this saying to me, Carla, with almost every kid partially or below math? Is this an individual kid issue?
No.
And that's the other thing. And thank you for bringing that up and that's what I wanted to talk about on the slides. I'm glad you said it. This helps us with a couple of things. It helps us with the curriculum issue. So we need to look at our map and say, was it even on the map to be taught? Because maybe where the kids feel that it wasn't on the map to be taught. Secondly, are they individual kids? So in these areas, it's individual kids. Here it's, it's an instructional issue. So we need to ask the teacher, how did you teach it? Did they have the right conceptual understanding? Did they present it in a way the kids didn't understand? Or was there not materials available for them to have the kids access? So we ask all of these questions as we're looking at this data. So thank you for asking that because I'm about to say it.
You, you all know what these rosy columns mean, but there's nothing on that slide that tells us what they mean.
Well, it did, it was on the previous side as far as that, but you're right. The title's up here, I shouldn't give you the detail. So I apologize for that.
I just want to make a comment. I have this name of the framework because I used to work with it, but not to this kind of detail. Not specifically, if I could just go on as to how good this is and how great this is. You don't, you know, when a teacher needs to know, what should I be teaching? How should I be teaching it? Am I having success teaching? It's all there. It's all there. This is amazing. And the level of detail that it provides, this is a whole new era for us. This is phenomenal.
So I'm going to turn it over to Ed. So if Ed has less here, it is because I've asked Ed and Molly to do the impossible in a very short period of time. He'll, he'll explain that to you and Molly wants to chime in at any point, feel free.
And I just want to say Molly deserves all the credit for this because even before I had a chance to Google anything, she grabbed the challenge and created the whole thing. So Molly should be given credit. So technology challenges, with two-thirds of the technology department here tonight, Josh and myself, we managed to get a few extra things slipped in, in an era where we're doing things by assessment electronically instead of by paper. And MCAS went from paper to electronic all this year. And we're dealing with, manage computers to take assessments, upload unique user accounts based on what different assessments we use. They want the names of the, the kids they want, ethnicity, some of them. It's completely different sets of data we have to load for the different populations of the school. Add or delete licenses based on changing student body. Group students by proctor teachers and data managers. So when they get the results, they can easily just see their class without reading through a ton of stuff. Also provide latest applications or software interfaces so the students may take assessments. So whether they're on a lab computer or get a Chromebook in their room and take a Chromebook out, they'll have the necessary assessments and they change every year. Have data feedback available in a timely manner and upload state data to the district data portal. Train teachers in uploading data and using the testing portals. Because they were told to be a proctor of a classroom or a session, they may not necessarily know what to click on to assemble a testing group. And to give them, if five kids are absent today because of a cold, they need to start section one of an ELA test when it might be broken into one or two sections. And should they start section two and then go back to section one in a private setting? All that is amplified with an entire student body. The student data uploaded by the tech department is collected only one time a year for MCAS, three times a year for math testing. And the Connect Ed on the wonders program, a minimum of six times a year. That last slide that you saw Darcy explain with all the standards there are individual lessons that fill out in a complete unit. A unit happens after six lessons or six weeks. So there are six times a year that we're giving them the whole snapshot of that particular unit. But they can also individually have kids test on the computer for every single lesson. So that would be six times that or 36 times per year. The MCAS, the WEA map, Connected Wonders, Ingenuity, the WEDA for OLL students, I-science, that's new, a pilot we're doing. This is all areas that are all electronically using the computers to get assessment data. For MCAS, grade three does reading and math, as is the case through grade eight, except for grade five, eight, and 10 do science. There is no grade nine, 10, they have to take MCAS, they have to pass it or else they don't graduate. Minimum test sessions per school year for ACES, we have to assemble 16 testing rooms or scenarios or labs or classrooms. 16 to take them at ACES. RCS needs 13 sessions, 36 sessions at ARMS. And a high school only needs 12 sessions. The district, that's 77 test sessions. We're running around like crazy trying to get four buildings done with three people. That means we have to build four servers to download all the encrypted test questions so that they don't go jumping out to the middle of the United States and we would be at the mercy of our internet connection to get it. Once they answer the question, the answer gets sent out to the Midwest, but we have all the questions on site here. For math testing, things get a little more frequent. Fall, winter, and spring. First few weeks of September, we did the first one. And it's done in every grade from grade one to grade 10, ELA and math. ELA may be broken up into two different chunks. So they might have to come in a second time or a third time if they don't finish. The minimum test sessions per school, 108 test sessions for ACES, 36 for RCS, 96 for ARMS, and 48 for the high school, since we're only doing nine and 10 at the high school. In the district, an additional 288 test sessions a year. More servers we have to build. So we have all the answers and all the questions on the local machines because it's intensive with audio and sometimes some motion in the questions, so.
So let me just stop one second because I don't want people to panic into we're testing kids to death. Remember, this is taking the place of what a teacher used to do with a pencil and pen. So I want to make sure that's clear to everyone. So we're not putting all these test sessions in as if there's more. It's just when I was giving an exam at the end of my unit, that I would have created and corrected. Now the kids are going on and taking on the computer, which is taking less time for the teacher. But you can see how Ed is getting because on his end, dumping all that information in and out is a large part of the job. So I want to make sure that's clear because I don't want people to think we're testing kids to death.
Darcy, you break my mind.
Yeah, I can see the break, but I want to. Yeah, I can see the face, but I want to talk.
So with Connect Ed, Wonders, the one that's even more frequent, that's pre-K through grade six only. Minimum test sessions at ACEs, a hundred sixty-eight. Minimum forty-two at RCS, forty-eight at ARMS, or a district total of two hundred and fifty-eight test sessions a year. The total minimum number of test sessions per year for the school district is six hundred and twenty-three classrooms we get together to take those tests. And for the ELL students, that's usually taken once in January to early February with the more servers built for that. Unique uploads must be done for each student and teacher for each assessment. This might be the one for Connect Ed and Wonders that we have to populate all these things with all the students and all the teachers. And that's very, very different than a different one such as this. This is the sample data prep for ARMS that I did. This is part of eight hundred sixteen lines just for the twelve math tests. And I blanked out the kid's name there, but it goes on with their ethnicity needed to be listed on the site and birth date and all that. And that has to be uploaded for every test session because, and that's three times a year, because of changing populations, it's a lot easier to do it like this. So that has increased our timing bit. This is just the one I did for the math roster for this fall. It happened September, August for the math tests only. So the hardware and software configurations, MCAS and math, all the downloaded tests, by the way, on the servers that we built, all have to be purged and new tests downloaded on all the servers and all the schools. And by, like the math testing, we might have to download two hundred something tests because the odds of them getting presented the same question at the same time to the child next to them, it can't happen. They want it screened. MCAS and math testing, all desktop and lab computers must have MCAS and math client software installed on them. One by one, we have to go around to each lab computer and do that. It's a lot easier with the Chromebooks because I can put an app on there and blast it up to all the Chromebooks. So that's a bit easier. But it has to be removed manually and replaced the next year. MCAS and math, all Chromebooks need to have the updated app accessible. And all Chromebooks also need the WEDA assessment program for ELL. And that pretty much sums up the additional piece that we have to do this year as opposed to in previous years. So we could focus on technology development. So.
Okay. So what does this mean? What is the strength that's come out of building that? One, timely teacher assessment data, so we have real clear data. Quick intervention support to kids, which is what we've been looking for. Constant analysis of our curriculum, maps, and materials to make sure we have them in place. More informed discussions with teachers for celebrations. So it's not, well, here's what the kids are doing. Look what you did, that's so wonderful. And we have some real celebration points out in some of the data we're seeing. Better targeted support for professional development. So as Carla said, that area where it was partial, well, didn't we need to give the teachers some professional development in that area to build their confidence? Better understanding of the needs, areas, and focus of district funds. So we're no longer saying, we're just going to throw money at everything. Well, right now, we know these are the areas we really need to put our money in. Here is a concern. Making sure teachers don't feel it's an evaluation tool. And we've been talking a lot about that. This is not about evaluating a teacher. It's about assessing what's going on with the kids and supporting them. And we want to make sure we're constantly giving that mantra so teachers don't feel like we're just digitizing to tell whether they're doing a good, bad job. The tax is put on the tech department. As you can see, by the time it was done, you were exhausted. Imagine the few people who've been doing all of it. Again, going back to budget, I want to bring that forth because if we want to be a tech savvy school with up-to-date best practices for really understanding what kids need, this is a place we, I think, we're going to have to invest. As far as first support, and then secondly, looking at the type of hardware and software we have in place. Roylston infrastructure, huge problem. We are in dire need. I mean, those teachers do not have the same conditions as the other schools, especially with Wonders. They can only do one class at a time in the building. So you can't have three classrooms running the Wonders program at the same time. It shuts down. So it's a problem because of the frequency use that's having, having now. Hardware numbers as well. We may not have as many carts in one school as we do in another. Software issues for the product. I mean, this is something Ed built a whole program, one sec. And basically, the company called and said, by the way, we're changing it. So now you've got to erase everything and redo it. We have no control over that. Ensuring teachers build capacity to trouble shoot and fix problems that we have time to train them properly so the tech department doesn't have to do all this. Because some of it is just they try to fix the problem. They haven't had time to train them, so they can fix it themselves. So these are the areas of concerns coming from it. But I think overall, there's been some huge benefits. But we do have to look at in our upcoming budget cycle, how we're going to resolve some of those.
Ed was probably the person who's most perspective here. What's coming in at Roylston in terms of beyond speed data, et cetera? Are they, I had heard for years about a solid wire going up in there. Is it limited? Is that what the problem, the basic issue is? Is it still capacity?
Yes, they have a phone line, DSL phone line.
DSL?
Limited to three megabits per second. The bids will be opened up this Friday for the people that have bid on putting the fiber construction in and the wireless construction. It'll be a hybrid solution in town with the school being one of the five or six main anchor points. And the expected, I just heard some good news today that the expected last mile delivery of the last hookup will be next fall. So there's a chance that a good chunk of next year will be on it. And we're going from three to three hundred megabits per second. We're currently at two fifty in the other three buildings.
So if you were doing MCAS testing for Roylston, you'd probably only do one classroom at a time, pretty much?
Yeah, we do one classroom at a time.
Okay. Thank you. So move on now to reading, would that be in access?
Oh, let's go to the second person.
Oh, yes.
Turn it over to Molly. Shouldn't take long.
No, not long at all. So we were able to receive a competitive grant from the state this year called the Early Grade Literacy Grant. And the grant is aimed at providing funds and supports for school districts to really look at and analyze where your district is and move forward in terms of providing early grade literacy supports around curriculum instruction and assessment. And so as part of that grant, we received funding to have some outside consultants come in and support our district in that process. And so when we received that grant, we sat down and had a planning session to really look at what are our district's goals and our identified areas of need around early grade literacy. And so what you have in front of you is a rationale for how we're using some of the supports from that grant, particularly our two hundred hours with the support of a consultant from Keys to Literacy. She's an expert in early childhood and early literacy skills. And she's come in to work with our team to really look at where we are in relation to phonetic awareness and phonics instruction primarily and assessments aligned in those areas for preschool, kindergarten, and first grade. And the reason that we're using the resources to support that work is because our turnaround plan for ACEs is written with a heavy emphasis on developing a literacy-rich preschool program. And in addition to that, some of our goals, as you'll see outlined on this document in our literacy plan, are to really look at and analyze our new program for alignment in phonetic awareness or early grade literacy skills. And so some of that work will include looking at our benchmark assessment system that we have in place right now with NWA map testing and DIBELS and looking at, are those really assessing the areas of need to really see if our kids are, excuse me, where our kids are in those areas. And it also includes looking at preschool because we don't currently have a screening tool in place in preschool. So the first step we're going to be doing is identifying what are those core skills we want to make sure are in place in preschool, kindergarten, and first grade? What's that skill considering play? Are we assessing those areas to determine where our kids are in that process? And does the curriculum support adequate instruction and materials for those core skills for code-based instruction in those early grades? And so Amy, the early childhood director, myself, and our consultant from Keys to Literacy, Donna, have been going through and starting to observe in some of the classrooms to really see what does it currently look like? We'll also be doing some work analyzing the standards and alignment with our program to see if those core skills exist in our program or not and looking at developing an assessment tool or identifying an assessment to bring in to screen our preschoolers in that process as well.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure we kept people up to speed on what was going on.
You're doing some great work here. It's a lot of work. I can't imagine what it was like doing that totally. That's incredible. It's really refreshing, actually, to see the work you guys are doing. Results, your work is phenomenal. I'm amazed, I really am. I don't know if anybody sees it, but I'm seeing it.
There are some more details on my handout regarding some of the specifics of that work, too, if you're interested.
Right. Does Wonders have a quote-unquote preschool program with phonetic awareness and basic phonics and so on? And what is your actual concern? Is it the actual instruction at that level where teachers probably need more PD and so on and strategies?
Sure. So Wonders does have, they have sort of a sister program to Wonders called the Worlds of Wonders. And Worlds of Wonders is the preschool component. So it's uncommon to find a program that includes a preschool component. So we were really excited to see that Wonders offered that. And so the preschool team did do some work looking into that and did make the decision with guidance from the district to adopt that for this year as well. So we do have Worlds of Wonder in place. One of the questions we're asking is, is it enough? Is it enough to meet the, or is it enough to really hit those core standards around early literacy skills, phonics, learning, like awareness, things like that? We're also asking, does our schedule right now support the use of the program? Are the instructional practices in place to support that? And in preschool specifically, what we haven't adopted fully yet is a screening tool. So we don't have a norm-referenced screening tool in place yet to assess all kids in preschool. And some of the questions that are coming up in that process are, you know, what does that look like for our preschool as we have kids at, you know, three current years? And so what does that screening process look like? And what is our benchmark for kids going into kindergarten? And what skills do we want to assess to help support the transition pre-K to K-1? And so we're starting to look at some of those questions right now as well.
Is the Wonders program designed for kids in full-day programs?
It is designed for a full-day program, but there are suggested options and schedules for half-day programs. And so it's very adaptable for us as we're looking at our half-day programs. And that's some of the work that Amy started to do during some of our full-day professional development with our preschool team is looking at a suggested schedule for full day and a suggested schedule for half day and looking at what are some of the components that are sort of our power components, if you will, or things that we want to really make sure we're accessing and using. And that's some of the work that's going to happen through this observation with the outside reading consultant whose specialty is early literacy to say, you know, which components are going to get the most bang for the buck for us to use with our students and which ones do we maybe want to use as supplemental supports? Because there's, like with any program, there's more than we can ever use in the resources we have. So it's really looking at which are really high priorities for literacy.
Okay, thank you. Moving on.
This will be quick. Basically, the state, the new commissioner's focus is really leading with equity and access. And so as part of his focus, we have attended several meetings in the state. We had a state conference on it where we spoke directly to him. His mantra is that basically if we focus on equity, everything else will work. That's the bottom of that. So at the state conference, Eric Gooden, who is the superintendent of schools in Cleveland O'Isle, who has some of the best numbers as far as gaps, closing achievement gaps in the country, spoke. And what they talked a lot about is state of Massachusetts is number one in the number of children, in the level of understanding that children have across the country. However, when we look at some groups around special ed, low income, kids of color, we are some of the lowest numbers in the country. And so basically, what our commissioner is telling us is we really need to pay more attention to this and begin to do a lot of work in this area. So what have we been doing? Catherine and I attended a conference with Sodin Nado, who's one of the leading people around ELL work and working with Latino population, to hear her thought process. We also have been working with a small committee, myself, Mary Jane, Julie Stanley, Thomas Osborne, Beth Gospaderic, and Beth Braven to get some information from Zaretta Hammond, who is one of the leading forthright people around closing achievement gaps. And I have just been selected one of only four superintendents in the state to take part in what they're calling Influence 100, where the state's goal is over the next ten years to increase the number of minority administrators in the state to 100. And so what the state will be doing is piloting in several school districts, us being the only one in this region selected, to actually bring in minority interns at no cost to the district in administration. And so we are very hopeful if the grant funds go through that we may get an opportunity to have one to two additional administrators in this district at no cost to us to train. So if it obliges the school committee, I must get you permission to take part in this. I think it's an honor to be selected. It's myself, the superintendent of the Bedford, superintendent of Waltham, and superintendent of Salem that have been selected. I would like to take part. It does mean attending in Malden five meetings this year that are approximately two hours each. So I could work in the district half a day and then go. But I need to make sure the school committee is giving me permission to do that. If they aren't, I will move forward.
Let someone make a motion?
I'll move it.
Okay. All right, any further discussion?
Darcy, when do you get to the point where you're overstretching yourself?
I think when all kids in America are getting the proper education they need. I'll be honest with you. It is my passion and at the end of the day, I dedicate myself to it. And if I can, if I, you know, so I get up in the morning, that's what I think about and that's what I go to bed at night thinking about. And I know people might think that's strange, but it's true.
Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Great, I will let them know.
All right. The generator for RCS?
Yes, we are not going to discuss that tonight. Unfortunately, no one from the Senate board could be present from RCS to do that. So we're going to move it to another, it's okay with the chair, to another meeting where they can be present.
Superintendent Goals?
Yes, and I apologize I'm a little late on this, but I have submitted my goals for myself for this year. They directly align with our strategic plan. And so I'm required to do that under state law. So you have them in front of you. You can either vote in this meeting or people can look at them and we can come to the next meeting and vote on them. But I will be honest with you, these come directly from our strategic plan. There's not anything new. It was handed out by Cheryl. It says draft on it.
Okay. Do I have some comment as to whether you would like to have a month to kind of look these over and think about it and read them? And then we vote on it, approve them at the next meeting? Is that would be the?
Sounds good.
Sounds like the, okay. We'll vote next time.
You can send that down to her because I saw.
Just that we were very late getting the whole process done this year. Should have been done before the polls. All right, communications. Communications.
We gave you that in the packet unless anybody has a question?
Anybody have any questions for the enrollment?
No, thank you.
All right. Moving on.
Don't hold that. It's not good for you.
Okay. Funding for new position?
I don't know what that's about.
I think that needs to come off because that was discussed a lot, it's just kind of a repetitive thing.
Yeah, it might have been put on here by accident.
Okay. That's easy. That was good. Good. Financial statements and approval of accounts.
To finish your report in your packets, just a couple things to point out. I think I just notated basically that we moved a couple custodian staffs around. We lost the person at Aces, but we hired a person, so we've got that person, we've got that filled now. We lost our grounds person, but we do have a person stepping into that position as well. He just wanted to let you know. That's why you saw, see the budget balances over there, like on page seven, for example. If you look at the Aces custodial salary, that's why you're seeing 28,000 in there, how somebody had left and he hadn't filled it yet, but it's been filled now. Bottom line, again, budget is looking good, is on track. So is the revenue piece? Revenue report you have in here, and I just wanted to say, you know, there's the budget. The budget's 24 million. And to date, as of 10, as of 11/5, we have received 7,167. So we're still on track with both revenue and expenses for the year, and it goes out as a good positive result. Great. Thank you. There's no budget line transfers tonight, so we can go by that. There is other, I didn't pass out draft budget timeline. I just wanted to take a look at that because we ran into a question, but I think Lee actually answered it for me just before the meeting, and we'll discuss it, obviously. We ran into an issue where we were looking at, actually the treasurer found it because she was looking at the regional agreement. And the regional agreement basically says in one of the letters is prior to 45 days before the first annual town meeting. Well, the first annual town meeting is Royalston's at May 10. 45 days before the first annual town meeting of both towns of each year preceding the fiscal year to which said budget lays, be certified by the district treasurer. Well, that hadn't been done, and I went back a few years and it had been done, that's weird. It seems to have been done based on the Athol Town Meeting, not on the Royalston Town Meeting, even though the Royalston Town Meeting is the first town meeting based on the agreement. Lee says to me that the Royalston Town has always waived that.
We have.
I didn't see anything in writing, but I did want to, so I will explain that to the treasurer because she's going to go by the, you know, the letter of the law.
The problem you're going to have is I don't think Chris Long may remember, it was Linda Altman that always did it, but she's not a select person anymore.
So what do we do? Do we do something formal? We call them?
And ask them to send a letter of waiver, and they do it.
Send a letter of waiver. Okay.
They just do it.
Okay. Great. I did shoot up an email to Chrissy just before the meeting.
Yeah. I don't know if she knows, but if she doesn't, tell her to contact Linda and ask how the waiver was done.
Okay.
That's what we always do.
Yeah, it should be a very simple format. I mean, it could simply be a letter from Royalston boards.
We waived the 45 days. Great, great. So based on that then, forget that little, you know, handwritten thing I have in there because based on that, we would have had to have done something by March 26. So if we don't have to, that's great, we'll stick with, and this is the draft. We do, we do know a few things on here for sure. December 11th, we will, Darcy and I will be going to the Athol FinCon. We'd like to go there on December 11th. We'll have a budget sub on the 12th. We are going to the Royalston FinCon on December 13. And the two that I circled, I think, on your draft are the all boards and the budget sub committee for the public hearing. Again, this is just all based on last year, and I just plugged these in. These are dates and determination of the, obviously, of the school committee, so I don't know exactly when those are going to happen. So if anybody's got any other questions about, yeah, take a look at this. This is what, how we're going to proceed except for the all boards and the public hearing until we get a definite dates on those. Everything else is pretty much following last year's calendar.
Okay, so my suggestion is at the next meeting, we make a determination on those two dates for the all boards and for the public hearing so that we can get those finalized, if that's okay with the chair.
Okay. Moving on to strategic plan update.
Both of my strategic plan update items were dealt with in subcommittee, so if they report on them, I don't expect to...
All right. Reports of the chair on budget finance.
Nothing for that this evening, but if you'd like, I can segue into facilities and try to do it quickly.
Sure.
The facility subcommittee met earlier this evening, and we did our customary vote to approve $321,000 for the accelerated repair program for Athol High School. It's monthly invoice. We approve and then decide when it gets approved. We had an update. Obviously, the roof project is complete. Roof project is underway, and the windows and doors bids are open tomorrow, so we should know financially, you know, soon where we stand. We went into this, the budget, the roof budget was 700,000, under budget, so hopefully we can remain in that kind of mode. We also brought up and discussed the track project at Athol High School that we had mentioned previously. It was kind of a facilities upgrade with the track and work around the track with some buildings, fieldhouse, concession stand, lighting for the track, lighting for baseball stuff, et cetera. That was almost at the tune of 3 million. However, that has been pared down, and we have a track project proposal. That's about 1.4 million, just under 1.5. And the district will work with the towns to see if it makes sense to try to do something. I know there's, there has been a lot of interest in the community in Athol. I know a lot of people use that track facility up there to walk and exercise. That's kind of out of my wheelhouse, but whatever. But there are a lot of people in the community that use that, so there could be support for this. And like I said, you know, we'll work together with the town, looking at anything like USDA grant funding to try to bring the cost, the actual physical cost down, because unfortunately, without the type of assistance, I mean, it's going to mean a debt exclusion. And, you know, we've had a lot going on, but the timing might be right because Aces came in, $4 million under budget. The high school thus far, $700,000 under budget. So, you know, kind of using that as a marketing tool to our advantage, we might be able to take care of this. I mean, we're doing a great job with upgrading the facility and the building, so we might as well do something to the outside other than a roof and windows. So they can make sense for a facility-wide investment for the kids, you know, because it's that embarrassing for the district, et cetera, to have track and field, but those kids aren't able to have home meets, and they haven't been able to have home meets for years because of the condition up there. So this is something we'll look at, we'll work at it. Also, we're looking to bring the, as you recall, there were some last-minute cuts that we did in the budget this year. We're looking to restore extraordinary maintenance for additional capital improvements. We're down to 50,000 for this budget, but we want to go back up to 150,000 because we need to keep going. That is a positive, it's been a lot of positive reaction in our community to see these types of things. So we would look to remove and replace ceilings in the main hallway corridor, renovate the walls in the main hallway corridor, including removing and upgrading the athletic trophy cases, and also replacing 10 sets of interior doors along the gymnasium and the auditorium side. So that's just something to bring up and look at as we move forward in the budget. Also, it has been suggested, requested, that the good folks at ARMS kind of likes the new sign at AHS, and they would kind of like some sort of a version down here. We all kind of felt that there would be, that could happen, but it may be because of the proximity, would it necessarily be down here for ARMS? Would it be at the top of the, you know, for ARMS and Aces? So, I mean, we'll look at that. And also, we've been informed that the cafeteria up here is in need of a new stove, so we'll look at, you know, either food service funding or, you know, whatever we need to do. Actually, the net cover, what you brought, was there anything else that you, I was just trying to...
Nope, I think you got it up.
Okay, all right. Sorry, that wasn't too quick.
And I just wanted to mention a couple things. Last night I was at a Royalston town meeting, not a town meeting, but a budget meeting, and they were very pleased to hear what's transpired with the high school, improvements in the high school and so on, and how, you know, the long-term finance, the district should be pretty stable as a result. The other thing, and this is just more of a sense I got from the people at the meeting, we may want to think about ways to sell the track project to Royalston, even though a very, very small percentage of it may be paid by Royalston, it might be a tough sell to the community of Royalston. So if we could give some thought to that down the road, it might be a good way to develop, and you might want to develop a strategy.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. You brought up a couple of points that I wanted to ask about. When the roof was done, there was a light, lighting upon the roof of the building?
Correct?
Yep. 105 a couple times in the last few weeks, they're not on. What's going on with that?
I did notice that, and I did not, I forgot to bring it up to Bob, but if Bob could give an update. I've actually got a lot of people in the community that's mentioned that, they've noticed the new lights and they're not on.
I'll check into it.
Okay.
And the other thing, where the new sign went in the high school, there was a granite marker that had been there as a class gift from, I think, the class of 1988. That was taken down and what's planned?
It is currently stored, and it's going out by the pavilion.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. We'll start with that. All right. Negotiations. Negotiations has started, and we have our first joint meeting, the PATA, on Monday, November 19. Okay. Academic excellence did not meet. Relations.
We met immediately before this meeting, discussed basically the attendance campaign that Darcy wants to initiate. We have, as I think we've heard at the last meeting, very high level of chronic absenteeism. And it has been very difficult to reach parents and persuade them of the importance of getting their kids to school. This, you know, absenteeism has to do with parents who are not committed to getting their kids there. So there's, there's a multi-faceted program being developed here, which is part an outreach campaign and part Shirley Mitchell, who, and Darcy spent a great deal of time praising it to the skies during this meeting, who will be involved in getting in touch with the founders of the chronically absent kids, identifying problems and getting new services.
Policy subcommittee. We spent, we met this morning and spent the entire time talking about our facilities use policy. There's been some comments and questions about a new fee schedule that we are putting together to go along with this policy, and we just, there was some clarification that needs to be made, and Fred, I think you have those clarifications for us.
Well, I was asked about the, apparently you have a driver ed program in the school that's run as a commercial purpose, a private purpose. And so I was asked whether or not that's consistent with the community use of school facilities. It doesn't appear to be, because it says under paragraph two, "School facilities may not be used for individual, private, or commercial purposes." Now, it is permissible to lease or rent a portion of the property to a private vendor if there is a substantial student purpose, which of course a driving school can. But there's also potentially the issue that that cannot be a pre-selected vendor, that there has to be some, yeah, some contact to allow other people that might be interested to submit their plan. Now, apparently this has occurred for numerous years here. It's occurred in other school districts, too. I'm not unfamiliar with this current. I did previously go to the inspector general's office on this issue involving other school system. I haven't done it with regard to the school system to get a current clarification of the rules and regulations associated with this. And I wasn't familiar with this issue until today. So I have, I always do an examination and a review of the law and with state agencies before issuing a legal opinion. So I don't have a new legal opinion tonight because I would first have to be given a direction to provide a legal opinion, and then secondly, I would do it in the usual format that I do it. I mean, for example, I did that on an earlier issue, yes, tonight, but the request of a legal opinion was given to me a few days ago by Lynn, and then I knew we were meeting tonight, so I made sure that she got a view for tonight's meeting. So I think that's the issue of how the community uses school facilities.
I think that I would like to request, I'll leave them open here.
Just a quick question. We don't, we don't have to cease operation. At the moment, according to the policy, we do. Well, as she says, we are not supposed to allow, mostly allow, commercial vendors to use our school. That's what it currently says. So we've been doing something illegal up until now, based on the policy as the superintendent has read, unless directed by the school committee to do something differently. My role is to follow the policy.
I'm not going to direct you to do something.
I have a question for Fred. We were considering a policy subcommittee as a question of the school committee's written policy. It seems to have two that were conflicting.
Actually...
But the question, you seem to be addressing this matter of state law.
Correct. There's different elements of state law, so let me deal with both of what you said. The first is you don't have conflicting policies. What you have is a policy that referred to as a KF, which is the actual policy statement. You have a KFR, which is the implementing regulations of the policy. So you don't actually, I know there was some confusion earlier today. I do these policies all the time for school systems. They aren't conflicting. What is the policy? What is the implementing regulation?
So the implementing regulations are the ones that say you can't allow private organizations to use.
Well, by the way, under state law, you can't either. Now, except that if it's for a steward purpose. For example, let me give you, you have the YMCA, I believe, in your building. Okay. So that affects the students of the school, so that because it affects the students of the school, you can lease part of your property to them for that particular purpose. But you can't lease part of your school for an entirely private purpose. So to give an example of that, if a local insurance agency, I think they wanted to use part of your building to run... part of your building to run their business, and they said to you, "And, by the way, we will pay you rent at X number of dollars, uh, per month," you can't do that because your public, uh, uh, facility has to be used for a public service. However, the exception to that is if a primary focus of it benefits the pupils in the district. And it doesn't have to be just the pupils of this district. Uh, it can be a situation where it's the pupils of this district, and it could impact the pupils of other districts too. But it, there has to be a pupil connection to make it legal.
So that exemption that you just outlined would apply even to the policy we have that doesn't have an exemption? Am I right? I mean, I'm, I'm...
Well, what, what hap, the, there's two issues. One, your current policy says that you can't do it.
Yeah.
Now, the second part of it, however, is, uh, I said that you can do it, but this gets to the second legal question. You, you can do it if it involves the pupils of the district. And it could be other pupils. I think you have some program right now, uh, which, uh, is offered to the pupils of this district, and, uh, potentially there's students in other districts involved. I can't remember which program it was, but it was discussed previously to that. Uh, but then, the problem is equal access. So if you say to one, uh, organization, they have access to your school, I mean, to any other similarly situated organization would have equal access. The way you prevent equal access is that you actually solicit it with regard to a minimum number of groups that are interested, and then you can select from that minimum group and you record it, and that, uh, research, it meets a requirement of the inspector general's office. But you can't say, "Yeah, you're a great organization, we want you to do it." You have to examine, it's supposed to be great. And, uh, so if there's three that can provide a, a driving class or student, and you choose to have it in your building, uh, because many places don't have it in their building. Some do have it in their building, and that unique, there are other school systems that have it in the school building too. And I'm not saying that every place that, uh, does this had followed the guidelines of the inspector general's office. I had a case two years ago similar to this, and that's where I went to the inspector general's office as requested by the school district. And, uh, the advice at that point in time, and I always do it again every single time it comes up, to make sure the people and authority haven't changed their minds. Uh, they indicated that we could not just say, "You get it," that there had to be a process by which more than one entity, uh, is advised of the situation. There has to be a selection. And the selection has to be based upon good business practice.
And they have to be, right?
Yeah, it can't be for free, because it's a, essentially, a lease or rental situation. You get to determine what that is. So there, there are no governments that are going to tell you what that is. You would have to determine it. But you would also have to be consistent. So if you have a fee schedule for an outside private entity, where there is a school purpose, which you can't, there has to be a school purpose, then whatever that is, it has to be consistent. And that deals with the equal access issue.
So in essence, it's not impossible for us to have the programs that are running from private organizations on school property. Now, will we have to jump through an additional set of hoops?
Well, potentially. As I said before, I, every time an issue comes up, I do due diligence.
Yeah.
I can't give a formal legal opinion tonight because I haven't done it.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just aware of that.
That's, that's the general canon.
Yeah. But I, I think I know what my legal research will show, and I'm telling you that, but it's not formal until I actually present it. And I always give legal opinion into it formally.
Dale.
Uh, I have a question. If recollection is correct, I believe we had a request that in the past from someone who wanted to give private music lessons to our band members, and we said no, because they want to use rooms, you know?
It's exactly the same terms.
Exactly, it's just a different...
Yeah.
A different product, if you will.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you could just, just, right now, we're theoretically vulnerable, um, to essentially working on either the regulation or one policy. So, are we on hold until we made a decision beyond this? So are we gonna hold until the next meeting?
Um, I'm gonna be honest. Um, because of past practice, I approved two commercial people to come in. One was a soccer camp, the other was a driving school. Did charge fees to those individuals, uh, but now reading the policy, I think we have to go back and let the entity that currently wants to use the building say no. Um, and I think moving forward with the other entity, I think the answer has to be no. Those are the only two I know of, um, in my tenure here, um, where that has been a situation. In all other cases, they have been nonprofit agencies, which goes under a different, uh, uh, different guideline according to our policy. Um, so that's where I am at. Um, this was brought to my attention because I did put forth fees for those and people paying concerned. So, um, I went to the legal opinion of our school lawyer, and reading the policy, noticed that this past practice may not have been appreciated.
Okay. Okay. All right, so...
So, is there a, a decision by the school committee for me to give a formal legal opinion?
All right, just ask a question.
Sure.
I think I need a little bit of clarification because I would see a soccer club or a basketball camp or something quite different than a private business, it says, that is, uh, conducting business on school property. I mean, those sock, those camps and those things are, uh, feeders to our, to our sports programs here in the district. So, do we basically, we would advertise type thing, Fred, and just say, "We're, we're, we're offering up, uh, you know, if somebody wants," you know, kinda like a procurement thing almost, to be like a...
Yeah, I can expand it to examine that as well. You, you're right for the issue that's, um, loosely referred to as sole source. So if there's only one that does it, then you should just do that one. You don't have to search to the eastern Massachusetts to get a soccer camp out of it.
Yeah.
So there may be the only ones to do it, and based on that, uh, there isn't much of a process you can follow.
Okay.
The other, the other way, and this is what I was gonna bring up, is if they had nonprofit status, it's another whole situation. So example, the soccer team went, or the soccer camp went under the booster's cloths, then we don't have to go through that process. So that's what, so there isn't, that it can't be done, it's just how do we do it to completely don't end up with a loss?
Yeah, I would agree with Darcy on that. The difference is whether it's a profit or an enterprise, uh, because you already have a policy dealing with nonprofit, but if they're, they're in here to make profit, and that's where this policy applies. And as I said, you could determine on case-by-case basis to allow that as long as there is a strong, uh, pupil component to it that benefits the students here. You can't do it to, you know, afford an insurance company to rent out part of your property. I don't need to pick on the insurance company.
The only thing that's close is attorney's.
That's very true.
So is our reaction to request the, the legal defense?
Yes. Someone wanna make... I make a motion that we have Fred look into it. Give us some legal...
Second.
Yes, sir. Okay. Any further discussion? No, all those are favorable.
And now the next school committee.
Thank you.
Yeah, and in the interim, however, I wanna make sure the school committee is clear that the superintendent will follow the policy as written until the school committee, after listening to the legal opinion of the lawyer, makes further decisions, because that is what the written operation policy is covering.
Yes.
Okay?
Can I make a question? Do we have anything? But we have to ensure... Yes. Uh, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to adjourn? I make motion to adjourn to go into a second session. Second. All those are favorable, and this has to be open. Uh, okay.